Go ahead and open up the ordinance committee meeting. And the first thing we have is an ordinance amending Chapter 114-88 for truck routes. And our city attorney will be addressing that.
Thank you, Mike. I almost called you mayor.
(laughing).
Yes, sir, is okay.
(laughing).
The Public Works Director requested that this change be brought forward. And I think he's got a PowerPoint presentation he may want to... He may want to show what this change would do would further define a truck route and actually would require in connection with a project, a grading permit, that they would go ahead and designate a route for some of these trucks to use. Because I think we've got an issue with dump trucks going places they're not supposed to go and tearing up streets.
Our current truck weight ordinance refers to anything... These trucks as local deliveries and lets them go wherever they want to. We're trying to close that loophole up just a little bit. We've got delivery trucks, could be 80,000 or 12,000. And we don't really define which... What we're talking about. We're trying to keep them off of local streets. We had several complaints and we're doing a lot of damage after the storm a few weeks ago where the trucks, like we've been talking about, some of the roads that are... Need to be repaired, they fell through. So, we're fixing damage. So, we thought we would bring this... This may be a good time to discuss this.
I think we've got them in our packet too, so...
Okay. Yeah, the second... There it is. So, this is at Public Works. The way we've sorted it out is this upper truck, that's our full-scale dump truck. We'll run that on truck routes and heavy-duty pavements. The lower one is our... This is what we're going to for what we call our flatbed trucks. They're smaller and they won't tear up the road running on local streets. So, that's what we're... There's a specific weight in the ordinance and this helps define where that break is. And then... Oops. And then it also references... The current ordinance references the approved truck route map. And that's it. We may want to revisit this and add a few more routes that would be available to some of these... The construction haul trucks.
And that's what, 412? Our Elm Springs and Huntsville Street?
It's basically state highways in Huntsville.
As far as in the city?
Got Huntsville, but not... But it stops at just past I-49.
Yeah. But from there east though is our... Really, our only designated truck route in the city than in the federal highway.
I have been seeing 18-wheelers coming up our new Gene George area from Elm Springs up to 412.
Yep.
And it is signed for no trucks.
They're coming off of Elm Springs Road heading south on...
Yes.
Gene George. Going to the pilot station probably. Yeah.
So, basically, you're wanting to limit any kind of truck, even a delivery truck, if it's over 35,000 pounds?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I contacted FedEx and UPS just to make sure we weren't causing problems with what I would consider legitimate local delivery trucks.
Yeah.
And they gave me those numbers.
Would be less than 35,000?
Yeah, they're... I think they're less than 26,000 because...
But what about a lumber truck?
Well, that would be a construction truck if it was over 35,000.
Dump trucks?
Dump trucks.
If they're over 35,000, they'd be restricted?
Yes.
Is what you're saying?
Yes.
And does typical dump truck going to a, say, residential building site, would it be less than 35,000?
Not necessarily.
Well, how are they going to get to the resident...
That's what the... They would be assigned a route when they get a grading permit.
A specific permitted route to the site.
To their site, because...
How do you get that permit?
When a project that goes through large scale or a subdivision has a grading permit at the end of that process.
Okay.
So, we would include that route. And if the only way they could get there was over a local street, we would make them bond damage to get to the construction site.
What about... Okay. Yeah. So, who enforces this?
Right now, the police enforce the law that you have, but...
But are they really enforcing it?
No.
That's what I wondered.
I don't believe this is specific enough.
Well, they do if they... If they see it.
If they see it.
Yeah.
And I don't know that it's specific enough.
I'd like to know how many tickets we've ever written for it, Ernest. Hardly none.
Truck route violations? Not very many. I know if there's a... If there's an issue with a particular road, I know the police department's always been...
Good to watch?
Very quick to go out and watch. And usually, once they inform the company, they stop, usually. That's usually all it takes. Obviously, we'd rather have that than write a ticket, so...
Well, I see trucks on Don Tyson all the time. And I mean, they've just figured it out. They know it's easier to go down Don Tyson than it is to go down 412.
I suspect the map apps are part of the problem. They don't bother to check local ordinance. They just said, "The map app says go this way." We've had that on a couple of other occasions. So, we would have to... If we change our map or change our ordinance, we'd have to work with the map apps to get that upgraded.
For my part, I like the... I like the designating a route with a grading permit because that's a lot of the problem, I think, is, you know, taking shortcuts through Hunt Park or whatever the case may be.
Correct me, isn't there something that the Highway Department won't let us put up, signs saying truck route or anything like that? It seemed like I remember that we had that question once before, that they wouldn't let us put up a...
They regulate signs on their right-of-way. So, that may have been what...
But not on our streets?
Not on our street, no. But, you know, once they're on the street, they're on the street.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, I don't have a problem with changing it, it's just...
So, the real change is just during large scale, making sure that if they're going to be crossing our streets, that the developer knows he has to get a... With his grading permit, has to get a permit for those dump trucks or whatever to access that construction site.
Correct. And he'll have a designated route.
And it's good for the... As long as the building permit is issued?
Probably. When the project is accepted, then...
But I'd say a lot of them are not going to be large scale. It's going to be residential stuff.
Well, and you do grading permits sometimes before the large scale, depending on the project. So, if it was... But it would still be with the grading permit. It'd be part of that process.
Mm-hmm. Okay. For the actual construction though, too, for pads, et cetera, would have to have a permit for those dump trucks, would they not?
I have one question. So, you've got dump trucks when you're doing the subdivision, okay? The subdivision is accepted, they go away, and we start building houses. You don't get a grading permit for each individual house, do you?
No.
Okay. So, then we've got another situation where you've got dump trucks going to a house...
And our concrete trucks.
And our concrete trucks. So, it can't be just tied to a grading permit?
No.
Or you're missing the subdivisions and the houses that are being built.
That's why the developer would have to be notified at the time he did his large scale of what would be required as far... From start to completion of his project, so he knows that...
Yeah, but there's swimming pools...
Well, but you're mixing apples and oranges, because the large scale is a commercial or industrial.
I understand.
You can handle that one until it gets... But when you do a subdivision and the developer is finished and he's selling lots to a builder that's doing five lots, he didn't have a grading permit?
No, but that... He doesn't have a grading permit. But what I'm saying is, at the time of the large scale, the developer needs to know that he's going to have to notify subsequent buyers of the bare lots, that if they are accessing it with vehicles that exceed our weight limits, they have to have a permit to get to that location, do they not?
They... If that's the way you write it, it's tied...
That's the only thing that makes sense.
To the building permit, not the grading permit?
Yeah.
Because, yeah, I mean, there's some logistics into that. Then who enforces that when it's not a grading permit anymore? Is that something else you're putting on the building inspector to watch how those trucks are coming in?
No, it'd have to be the police department, not the building inspector.
Just asking.
We currently have a right-of-way enforcement division in Public Works. It could be associated with that. It'd involve getting somebody certified to weigh trucks.
Oh, yeah, that's the division where James drives around town in that four-wheel-drive truck he doesn't use for snow removal. I remember, yeah.
But, Mike, you'd have cement trucks coming in for swimming pools and patios and stuff, too.
Yeah. It has to be tied with building permit some way if you're going to enforce it.
Where does the bond come in in all of this? Are bonds bonding for the damage?
Yeah.
You can associate the bond with the grading permit or the large scale.
I think we're missing a lot, because like they said, a swimming pool, they're going to be bringing in, you know, concrete trucks, dump trucks, backhoes, all that kind of stuff. So, the way I feel is it would have to be building permit-related as well as this-related, depending on what the project is. Because, you know, my subdivision was 15 years old and we built a pool. So, I'm not sure... I think we're missing some things here.
Well, it seems like there would be a way we could distinguish between... I mean, we don't need to let the perfect get in the way of the good here. I mean, if we... If we're having trucks in and out of a place doing a large operation grading and then, you know, where they're really putting a strain on our... Some of our local streets, that's one thing. If you've got somebody that's getting a cement truck to their house to build a pool, you know, I don't know that we... I don't know that we need to get down that far. So, it should be tied to something that we allow that's larger, not necessarily someone doing, you know, building a patio in their backyard. I mean, yeah, that truck's overweight, but it's just one or two trips maybe, you know? I don't know how we distinguish...
But I think that the whole idea of delivery, you know, that's... We tried to do that when this...
Right. Because, yeah, we do truck routes that way now. If a truck's making a delivery, you know, then they're not violating... If they're on Don Tyson and they're making a delivery somewhere on Don Tyson, then they're not violating anything. So...
Right now, even a semi could make a delivery, which honestly, a moving van might do that.
Yeah. So, if we could tie it to the larger operation somehow, maybe it is grading permits. Maybe it's a subdivision, Patsy, that's been approved and streets are being put in or something. Maybe it's something like that where we can... I like the idea of distinguishing a route, you know, where you've got trucks just in and out all the time.
What about moving vans though? Like, you know, Mayflower truck?
Yeah. Yeah, it would violate... But I just don't know that they're our problem, is what I'm saying.
That's my point. That's... I agree with you.
Could you tie it to a dollar amount, similar to building? Like, if it's a X amount up to be able to differentiate between a swimming pool and a large-scale development? I mean...
I don't know.
I just feel like you're making an ordinance that most of the time you're being broken to keep the people that have done something wrong from doing what they're doing. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
You have a subdivision with 25 lots and you've got a builder doing 10 at one time. There could be a lot of concrete trucks going in and out at the same time on a brand-new local street that we already accepted. That was my only concern when you... And we have builders that will come in and buy several lots and have 10 or 15 houses going at the same time. So, that's a lot of trucks in and out for that, too.
So, what happens if we do have that scenario and that pavement fails? We already know that it's not because of the contractor's truck. It's because of the owner's truck.
We paid Watkins just so they could build those apartments.
And connect to 64th.
I don't have the answer to that, but I know that when you get a builder doing 10 or 15 houses, you've got a lot of concrete trucks going in and out.
And a community college.
And if the street fails, what do we do? It has a two-year maintenance bond. So, if they get them all built in two years, we're good. If it's beyond two years and we're back to, who do we charge that to?
But really, your concern is to try to come up with something to protect our streets from these heavier vehicles. What's your basic recommendation?
I'd like this approved. And if we need to tweak a little bit to designate the... The way we designate it, tie it to a large scale or something commercial, we could do that.
Brad, can you give an example of where you're seeing us have a problem? Is there some... Are you seeing the roads being torn up?
Yes, sir. We've had several... A few councilmen have called in and said, "Hey, this is... I got a call, this has fallen apart."
Out by Marchant Arena in that area?
Yeah. We're repairing them now.
Downham was a big one.
We're keeping the cost of the damage repair, so we can tell you how much it cost us this time.
What happens if we tie it just to our large-scale developments? And then we see that there's an issue later with something smaller? Can we amend that?
Sure.
If we could just concentrate maybe on large scale and maybe grading permits if they're over a certain amount of acres or...
Well, that's...
You know?
If it's over a certain amount of acres and they're disturbing ground, they have to get a grading permit. I believe it's one acre.
Okay. Okay. That would at least... It might not catch everything, but it would catch a big part of our problem and we could see how it works, because that's something we can keep track of.
Well, basically, what this... The way this ordinance reads now, you're tying it to the grading permit anyway, which is what you said, so...
Mm-hmm.
That's probably a good start without expanding it to other areas right now and then take a look at it and see what we have.
Yeah.
What's the committee's pleasure?
Have them redo it and bring it back?
Or redo it how?
Like what y'all were saying.
Well, it's already in here about the grading permit. It's already in here.
Tied to large scale right now?
Well, it's tied to grading permits, which...
Tied to grading permit.
Which includes...
Would we ever have a grading... Would we ever have a large scale without a grading permit?
No.
No.
I wouldn't think so.
Or a subdivision without a grading permit?
Right.
No.
You could have a large disturbance area that has a grading permit without a large scale.
Right. So, if you tied it to the grading permit, I think we're going to catch... It sounds like we could maybe catch our biggest problems without getting down to every truck that has to make a delivery to every house.
That's our hope, is get this in place, get enforcement where it needs to be, and if we have a problem, we'll come back to you.
Mr. Watson, we're discussing the Highway Department. You said that they won't designate signs telling truckers that they may not access is-it upcoming roads? So, if they're traveling on a highway, if they're planning to exit that the Highway Department says, "We're not going to put anything that says you cannot..."
It seemed like I remember that.
Like you're trying to make like giving them a warning that not a truck route or...
Yeah. It seemed like I remember that we looked into that once before.
I just wanted that clarified. Thank you.
So, on this ordinance, if we can put in there that it's tied to the grading permit, there's going to have to be some verbiage changed in here, Greg, to make this...
It's already here.
I think that's what's in there.
It says approved in the project for a grading permit.
It says shall not leave a marked truck route except along a designated route approved in the project's grading permit.
That wouldn't catch somebody needing a cement truck for a sidewalk or a pool at their home or anything like that.
But this, as it reads though, it does what Brad was wanting to do, at least clarifying things. And if we run into problems and needs to be modified, we could, but we try to...
I feel like the verbiage, if you put in there that projects not requiring a grading permit or exempt from this, could you do something like that?
You don't ever want to put anything in something's exempt. Everything will turn around and be exempt.
Because that would make... I'm just afraid that trucks that aren't associated with a grading permit are going to get pulled over and, you know... I feel like you're... There's probably more trucks out there not associated with a grading permit than there are associated with a grading permit.
But that could happen now.
Sure. It doesn't have...
If there's a truck... If there's a dump... Yeah, a dump truck on Don Tyson could get pulled over now.
Right.
And they'd have to tell what they're doing, you know, where they're heading and everything.
But a dump truck loaded is a lot different than a dump truck unloaded. So, you know, they'd have to make that distinguish. Distinguish that. I mean, fully loaded tri-axle dump truck like that can carry a lot of weight. They've got that third wheel down, third axle down, that's carrying a lot of weight.
Well, yeah, that's true. You can't write anything without... There's going to have to be some discretion, you know? You're not going to be able to write anything that covers everything, every situation.
So, we're just adding what's underlined, just adding to the existing ordinance?
Yep. That's all the changes.
What about the Mayflower moving van?
Wouldn't be a violation?
It's a destination.
How... If it's more than 35,000, how's it not a violation?
It's going... It's just like a...
It's a delivery vehicle.
Because it's a delivery. It's going to a specific place that it's got to be able to get to.
But it... But this says it has to be less than 35,000 pounds. Right, Ernest?
Quite honestly, you could take out the first underlying six, seven words where it says that has a GVWR, 35 pounds or less, and you could take that out and it wouldn't change where it starts with provided however, which is the most important thing, right? Take out that first underlined part and just leave in where it starts with provided however. And I think it would accomplish what Brad's wanting to accomplish.
So, take out the 35,000 pound part first?
Take out where it says that has a GVWR, 35 pounds or less, and take that... Leave the ordinance the way it reads now and just add the part that says provided, the underlined part, provided however, and just make that addition.
Yeah.
And then...
Then you get your Mayflower.
Yeah.
That just changes that 35,000 back to 80,000.
No, it changes it back.
It doesn't have it in there at all.
Well, it has it in the second underlying part.
Any truck making a volified delivery.
Yeah, it just allows them to do it if they've got a reason to be there, yeah.
Except for construction material trucks that are greater than 35.
Those will be taken care of with the permit.
Yeah, that's a better way of doing it.
So, that verbiage on there that says a bond to cover the cost of street damage repair may be required...
Discretion, Brad. That's the discretion of... Probably Public Works, since they have to repair it.
Yeah.
So, if there's street damage, I mean, and it's proven that it's causal and that, then why is it may be required? Why wouldn't it be, shall be required as part of the project grading permit?
There'll be some small grading projects that wouldn't need it. They're not going to have that big... That much of effect and grading permits is judged on its own merits anyway, as far as...
I think, yeah.
But this whole thing...
I think it would depend, too, on the route we have to send them. Depending on where this construction is, we may have no choice but to put them on some roads that aren't great.
I guess what I'm saying is, this whole thing is based off of repairing damage.
Preventing damages if we can.
Preventing and repairing. So, if that's the course of this, then why is it we... Well, you might have to take care of that damage, or you might not have to take care of that damage.
So, are we requiring everyone to put up a bond at the very beginning of their project to cover any street repair that may need to be used? And then if we don't use it, we release a bond? Or how do we determine when that bond has to be done? The damage already done, and then we get the bond?
I like the way it is.
Well, the language in here says it may be required during the project grade... As part of the project grading permit.
Okay. And Public Works is going to determine where the damage is, who caused it, and what the bond needs to be, correct?
Up front.
Before they start the project?
Yeah.
Or after it's...
This would have to be up front if we're going to charge a bond.
We already have an analysis of our streets, don't we?
Okay. So, we know that when this comes in and you've got this grading permit and they're going to use this route and it's this condition, then they have to put up that bond on the very front end. And then if nothing happens...
They may be required, is the way it's written now. That's what Brian's pointing out.
This... This is really analogous to what we already have in our excavation ordinance, that Public Works has the ability to determine in certain situations where there's boring or excavating being done. It says the amount of the bond shall be determined by the Public Works Director based upon the estimated cost of the repair. In this case, it's going to be like whether a bond's required or not is going to be determined by which streets they may drive on and they have an idea of which streets are probably more at risk for damage. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that's...
No, but is that... Does the language you just recited need to be in this one?
No.
Would that be a cleaner way to do it?
It says may be required.
Okay.
Assessment would be done. Assessment would be done that says this damage is already here, route that they're going to take, maybe having to fix. This is, you know, like when you go into a car wash, you've got a dent over here and a dent over here. And when you exit the car wash, if you have any other dents, that's on you or on them.
That would be part of the grading permit.
So, Public Works is who gives that bond... Gives the... They're going to go and assess where they're driving and then tell them what... How much it needs to be. And then go back and inspect after damage, after the project's done, to make sure that we don't need to exercise that bond. And then assess... And then figure all that out. But Public Works is the one that starts this process?
Grading permits are issued by engineering.
Engineering.
But they'll get input from Public Works to those type things.
I think it has to be may. I mean, there's no way you can say will. And if we want the ability to do that, I mean, it's going to depend on... You're going to be able to assess how many trucks they expect to have in and out of there every day, what the route's going to be, what they're going to be hauling. I mean, I don't know how you could get any more specific and...
But this is keeping us from having to sue someone after the fact, is what this is trying to...
No, it's to protect the street.
Right, but it's to get... Be able to charge money from somebody else to be able to fix the street, right? So, it's pretty much trying to avoid a lawsuit from the front end, Greg.
Really, what I'm trying to do is avoid the taxpayers picking up the tab for...
I agree.
What a developer damages.
Yeah, sticking with the bond aspect of this and using Downham Road as an example, was there a bond required for Downham during...
No. No.
So the city paid for the repair on the Downham. Are we charging any of these large trucks over there?
Not currently.
We don't have anything in place to...
That's what we're, that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Is there any action on the ordinance before?
I'll make a motion, and I think that we could pass it, or I'd like to pass it like that. Now, I think that it may be that there comes a point where the issue of the bond may have to be tweaked some, you know, we see how it's implemented, but I think this is at least a starting place. And I'd make the motion that we forward it with the first portion of the line that says that has a GVWR 35,000 pounds or less and take that, all those words out. So the only part that's underlined is starting with provided all the way to the end of the paragraph. So I'll move that that be forwarded to council with recommendation approval with that change.
Second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Now, we have another ordinance amending section 11086 excavations for the, and I think, I think you still have the podium.
But this one is a lot easier because all it does is it takes one sentence out of subparaphrase two A's, you can see where the line is through it, and moves it up to the introductory paragraph. So it applies in every situation, not just in the street cut situation. That's all that this does. The underlined sentence you'll see is identical to the one that was removed, the paragraph little a, it just moves it up.
Moves it to a different location?
Correct, to make it apply to paragraph one and paragraph two and paragraph three instead of just paragraph two where it was, two A where it was before, my understanding.
Yeah, we had a situation recently where somebody pointed out we couldn't require this because he was boring, not cutting. And we just said, okay, we need to adjust the ordinance.
Move this be forwarded with recommendation approval.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, Mike, before you, and I agree with it, I just, it prompts a question in my mind, because a lot of times we'll get calls from residents or somebody that sees a truck, let's say they see a semi on Don Tyson, and the police can't be everywhere. They're not gonna, they're not gonna see that truck if they're not in the area. I guess this is a question for my city attorney. If, if a person can get a picture...
Citizen's arrest? Citizen's arrest?
If, yeah, if a person can get a picture and it, I guess there would have to be some way it could identify where that picture was, but would that be admissible for, then to contact that company if the, if the name of the company and the phone number are on the door of the truck? Could we follow up that way? I know that, I know that our police department will contact that company if we know who it is and at least let them know they're not supposed to be doing that. But I don't know if we could go a step further.
Well...
It depends on how good a picture and...
Neighborhood Services does that too. People send in pictures of a vehicle parked in the grass, as long as you can verify when it was taken, where it was taken, as long as you can, the legal term, as Mr. Watson knows, Mr. Flores knows, as long as you can lay an adequate foundation, then yes, you could use it.
Okay. Because sometimes I've told people, man, just take a picture of it next time you see it, and we'll try and do what we can. At least we can contact the company. Again, if this ordinance that we're considering is, is being obeyed and it's got a name and phone number on it, so.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, that'll be forwarded to council for a recommendation to pass. Now, we have a, another ordinance relocating a portion of Maple Avenue and vacating a portion of right of way on Success.
And a...
And vacating a portion of right of way on Water Street.
Right. On pages 12 and 13, hatched areas, you know, we just built a new street. So Success no longer goes from Water to Park Street anymore. So basically, we're doing is we're relocating Maple Avenue, moving away with a portion of the right of way on Success shown on page 12, and a portion of the right of way of Water shown on page 13. No need for them anymore, subject to the water and sewer facilities that are currently in place. And I have vetted this through Springdale Water Utilities. Like, they're the ones that provided the drawings with the lines on them, put the lines on the drawings showing where their facility is. The mechanism whereby we locate Maple to its current, how it's been constructed, because we don't need the other part of Success to the other part of Water anymore, and we're gonna have to do that as well. On Jean George going south, I think Phase Two, we're gonna have to do the same thing once the project is finished because part of the old road is not going to be used anymore.
Yeah.
That's all this is doing.
So are they gonna tear it out, or is it just gonna stay there? I mean, what are the plans for that? That ends at the railroad, correct?
I think it's already torn out.
It's already torn out?
Isn't it? Yeah. Yeah, I think it's, I think so, Randall.
And it would by law, half of it would go to the property owner. For example, the Success part that's being vacated, half of it go to the property owner to the north, half of it go to the property owner to the south, subject to the water and sewer facilities that are...
I move the ordinance be forwarded to council with the recommendation to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs. Is there anything further to come before ordinance committee? If not, withstand the journey.
That finance next? Okay, item four has to do with transfer of property located adjacent to 3304 Martin Drive. Talking about this.
Hey, if you remember back in February, we brought forward a resolution which was passed that granted water and sewer easements across this property that we own. It's on page 15 of the packet. It's a little rectangular piece that at the time I mentioned that it's actually owned by the city, but it probably should have went to Springdale Water Utilities because it was for no other reason than for a potential lift station is why it was there. And the cities had been having to maintain it. The property owner to the south has approached the city about acquiring that, that parcel. And in doing so, the Springdale, Springdale Water has gotten all their easements properly documented on both parcels. They are perfectly fine with this property being transferred, and it would relieve us of the obligation of having to maintain this property. I hope you remember it.
This actually came up a few years ago, too.
Did?
Yeah.
At that time, the water department had some issues.
Right.
And those issues have since been resolved by the passage of the resolution this council passed in February. And also the Keens from the property immediately to the south of this parcel, they also granted easements to Springdale Water as well, just to make sure everything was in place.
And they want it. Keens.
Not doing anyone else any good.
Move the resolution be forwarded with recommendation approval.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Second item is FAA grant. Wyman's gonna talk about that.
We're getting another grant for the airport from FAA, and it requires the council to give the mayor the authority to accept it.
Is that the...
Pardon me?
Fifty-seven...
Yeah, about 58,000.
Yeah. Yeah, 57162.
Is it runway? Is it buildings? Is it?
It's actually, it's a, it's part of, wasn't it part of this second round of CARES Act? And the FAA offered more grants, and it's, is it tower? What specifically is...
A large portion of it has to be dedicated toward the contract tower, which we've already got in our budget, so it'll just free up that much money.
Yeah, this'll just free up money in the airport's budget because we're already paying the contract tower, and this'll offset that.
Move the resolution be forwarded with recommendation approval.
Second.
Have a motion and second, is there further discussion? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. And is that all of the finance?
There's one other item.
There's an item on the agenda.
Okay.
But it's not in the packet, and I had planned on being able to present a resolution to you tonight. It has to do with the last remaining right of way to be acquired for the 40th Street project. And unfortunately, I don't have that specific number with me tonight. I've visited with the mayor. We, we know what the property owner's general request is, but we don't have a specific number. So I'll do whatever your pleasure is, either forward it to council with no recommendation, and I can have the number by council, or you wanna table it to the next committee meeting. And I apologize, I didn't, I don't have it.
Really, I'd really, this is the last piece of property on this project, and anything that we could do to speed up getting this project bid would be much appreciated. So if you're, if you could forward it without a recommendation, then, and if something happens, if we still don't have from the attorney of the property owner what we need, then I guess we could table it then.
What property is it?
Uh, it's a...
Is it on North 40th?
Track four.
North 40th, right across from, just down from Smith School and across the street. Philip's property.
Okay.
So I'll note that she reached out to me over the past week. I wasn't able to make it out there. So I'm unsure if we should table this or not, because she has made the effort to, I think, get at least two of us out there, maybe Markman out there.
I think all of us have been out there.
Mike Lawson went out there.
Okay.
He made sure, he made sure to have her call me.
I don't know that it's about what our, what we're needing to settle.
Fifty, fifty-six, or 57,000 in that neighborhood, what they were talking about.
I'll make a motion, we move it forward with no recommendation, and we'll discuss it, what...
We're honestly...
Counsel.
Honestly, we reached out to the attorney, her attorney on Thursday of last week, said we really need this by four.
Okay.
And we didn't get anything. So we're gonna try again. We need to get this wrapped up. So if y'all, if y'all are good with forwarding it, and then hopefully we'll have everything in time to go out in the packet.
So has you given her, we have given her a dollar amount. Has she counter offered?
This is one we did not file eminent domain. We've been hoping to get this resolved without having to file eminent domain, working through her attorney. We've gone back and forth on several issues. We believe we had them all worked out. There was an issue with the fencing that was the main holding, holdup, and we believe we've got that worked out. Obviously, my hands are tied on who I can talk to and who I can't, since she is represented by an attorney, and that makes it a little more difficult. So we do have a, we do have a, a general idea of what they want in the way of compensation to resolve this, and visited with the mayor about it. He's, he's comfortable with it, but we just need a specific number to plug into the resolution that we don't have.
The owner's statement was to affect, basically, everything's been agreed to as far as fencing, the driveway, the trees.
Trail.
The, the trail, the et cetera, so...
Pipes.
Yeah, the drainage, yeah. So it's...
This one's been an adventure, an opportunity is what it's been.
Patty's back there laughing too, because she's been...
Okay, so we have a motion to forward to council without recommendation. Was there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion concerning this resolution? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there anything further to come before the finance committee?
Yes, sir.
I have one other issue I'd like to ask about. Where are, what's the deal on the conservation thing on Rabbit's Foot Lodge? Where are we, is that before the council next Tuesday night?
No, we're getting close. They, they actually came and toured last week with Chad. The Northwest Darksland Trust came out and toured the property with Chad, got some input, got to see it, and we are providing them with a more detailed legal description of the property that'll be subject to it, and then it'll come back to you.
So it's not on the agenda for...
Next time, no. But it is coming soon.
It'll come to committee.
It'll come to...
It'll come to committee, yeah.
Before it goes to the council. Okay. And finance is closed.
Item number seven deals with the community development block grant and specifically the fiscal year 2021 funding. We got Patty and Dean, but this outlines the spending for the, for the time between July 1st, 2021, and June 31st, 2022.
Is there any questions?
Just wanted to outline this.
I have a question. Dean, have you been able to find any other contractors?
Yes.
Uh, because I know that's been a problem in the past.
Yes, we found, it's called Ternish Construction, and they've started, his dad started back in the seventies with doing these projects. Now, his son has kinda taken over, and he's doing one house right now.
I know any other contractors besides them?
Just two right now. I do stop by at Locke, I go by Elliot's, I go by other supply stores and kinda just hang out, and I look for general contractors and talk to people.
I know, I know several that made bids that, because they weren't low, didn't get it, but...
Correct, correct.
Do you find instances where you let a contract, then you get extras on that contract? So your, the final cost exceeds what the original bid was?
Sometimes.
Most times, is it not true?
It depends on, so when we do a rehab, you don't know what's going on in the house. You have no idea. So the last three houses were pretty spot on. But again, you don't know when, what you're gonna get when you get in these houses. So when you open these houses up, they might say, well, guess what? We have to do a change order because of this, this, and this. And it does happen. And myself or Shane will go out there and we'll look. We'll make sure that it's spot on, that needs to happen, and we monitor it very closely to make sure that we're not getting, you know, messed up here, making sure that money goes, is going where it needs to go.
How many projects can you get completed in a year?
In a year, right around 30. Right now, with COVID, we're at 17, yeah, we're at 13 houses right now. This is for 2020 funds.
Yeah.
We still have about $412,000 left in 2020 funds. Last year, in 19 funds, I know we're a year behind, we did about 30 houses. So we're doing pretty good.
Is that a typical?
Yes.
Can you carry over any of those funds that you did not expand for 20s?
Yes. Yes. Typically, it's about 200,000, but, so right now, most houses go about 30 days, but with supply and demand in construction, it's about 60 days. So it's a little more difficult getting these houses done because it takes six weeks to get windows, takes two weeks to get doors, and it's just, so we're working with the contractors and they understand that.
Having trouble finding houses that qualify for this program?
No, actually, we have, as of right now, we have six on the waiting list, and tomorrow we're doing a lead testing on six houses that are pre-78, and they're gonna be right on the waiting list. So we have, we have plenty on our waiting list. And we are looking at making, basically, we're looking at, instead of focusing, focusing on 1978 and older, we're actually looking at, we'll bring this up to you guys later on, but definitely bring it, start from 1990 and lower, because 1990 is 30 years ago. I know it's scary, but...
So didn't we, it seemed like this comes around, didn't we just do this not too long ago, nonprofits?
Well, you might have been the CV, the COVID.
Yes, that was CV. Yeah, that was CV.
It was like two tranches of, they added up to over 900,000.
923,000, somewhere.
That's what it was.
We'll probably get another, another round of that, too. We'll probably get another, another round of that too.
Yeah, we're probably gonna get that.
You've seen us more on the CDBG program than you ever have in years because we had those extra funding.
Uh huh.
This is the time of the year when we normally do our CDBG program because it has to be had by the fifteenth of May. But you saw us on those others because we had additional funds.
And how did you come up with the thirteen and a half percent?
Based on what, all of those applications that are down there that requested funds. If we fund all of those, it gets close, it gets close to fourteen percent. You know, we send out applications, everybody sends in what they, what they want to do. Dean goes through those and makes sure they, they truly hit the mark and that puts us into being able to use that percentage of the money.
If, if you had more money into rehabilitation, could you spend it?
Usually, we put in between one hundred to two hundred thousand dollars the next, next fiscal year. Now with us, um, acquiring the Quanson Hut on four hundred Quark Street, that really helped us out, honestly. Because now we have right around four hundred thousand dollars. So we're kind of spot on where we need to be in our rehab of houses right now.
But, no, my question is if you had, uh, if, if, if you revised your, your projections, could you, if you had more money to spend on, on rehab, could you spend it or have you?
Well, this year, I think it's because of the demand and getting supplies and stuff in. It's gonna be hard to know whether we could do any more or not because as, as you said, it takes a long to get windows and, and materials and stuff. So I don't know if we can tell you could do more money this year or not because of the special circumstances we're in.
In the past, we, we, we looked at ten percent as far as the nonprofits.
Right. And so last year this time, we did about seventeen houses at this time.
Mm-hmm.
So we're a little low, we're at thirteen.
True.
It's just because of that and us putting out thirteen percent and we've had a lot of new nonprofits come in and.
We don't have to fund the hundred percent of their requests though, do we?
No, we don't have to, no.
But it's just right now, there's a lot of need out there. There's a lot of need and.
I know you all do a real good job of screening, but I would really encourage you to stick with those that have a good proven track record that.
And these all do.
That make a, that make a significant difference.
That's the first criteria that we've always used. If you're gonna get the money, we need to know that you're gonna use it, what you said you were gonna use it for, and you use it in a timely manner. And it's not for staffing and that kind of stuff. It's for direct assistance. The maximum we can ever have is fifteen percent anyway. That's, that's all HUD will allow. But I, I really think with the, the situation that we're in this year, a little bit extra to the nonprofits is a good way to use the money to give us this year.
You said last time though.
Well, it's been an unusual couple of years. It really has.
Got a couple.
Not knowing what we're gonna be able to do with supplies and materials for the rest of this year, I, I don't think it's a bad use of the money myself.
We had a couple nonprofits here.
Yeah, well, you have some of them here. They wanna address the, what they intend to use the money for, if y'all want to hear it.
I got a quick question, Dean. Have we in recent years not been able to carry over any leftover money just because it exceeds two hundred K?
We've always carried over it. We just, I have to write a memorandum to the director, um, Denise, and I have to write it to Little Rock and HUD and let them know what has happened and the explanation why it's happening.
Okay.
And usually that's fine, but again, you know, I'm not saying we're gonna get penalized, but we could.
It's never been an issue up to this point because if you look around the country, we're one of those cities that use the money as quickly as possible and very rarely have findings as far as that's concerned because we put the money out there and we do good jobs with it.
Yeah, so when we were at around ten percent given to nonprofits, we had plenty to carry over every year.
We did, we did. We're a little bit better at doing housing rehab than we, than we were. We have some new software that helps when they go to do inspections. We don't do everything by hand like we used to, which helps make it go a little bit faster. We can get, you know, and as you asked, Mike, we probably need another contractor. It's just not, everybody can do rehab. It's, it's hard work to do and you gotta know what you're doing to, to be able to make this work.
Well, and, uh, usually those that, that do know what to anticipate, so consequently, their bids are higher than, uh, than lowballing on the front end.
Yep.
And, yeah, there are several folks around that are very good at doing that.
Right, it's true.
And I also send out my typelations to them so they can see what other contractors are bidding so they know upfront. Instead of like, oh, my gosh, this is too much. They at least know, hey, okay, this is what I need to look at.
Yeah, they've seen, uh, they've seen what the, what the numbers were and there's.
Correct.
On the front end with some of them, I've been told, there's no way you're gonna make any money on it. Obviously, it comes with the change orders.
Correct.
Well, and, and look around. There's a lot of construction going on.
Uh, yeah.
We're in the construction business of doing other things now. That's not necessarily something they're gonna, you know.
Yeah, it would be nice if we, if we already knew, it'd be nice if we knew a lot of things about the rescue plan. But it'd be nice if we knew how much extra CDBG money would be coming as a result of the, of the rescue plan. Because if we, if we treat it the same way we did the CDBG COVID.
Right.
Then I, I think all of that went to nonprofits, did it not?
Sure, yeah.
Uh, but we don't know that.
I checked again this afternoon and I don't think there's anybody that can tell you, you know.
I think one thing we need to be mindful of is those seventeen houses might have cost us the same as those thirty with the prices.
That's true, yeah, that's true.
Cause you're looking at HVAC systems.
The other, the other issue I have too is ten and eleven percent hadn't been bad for those nonprofits and I'm all for nonprofits. But once you go to fourteen, it's hard to go back to ten. And we always do a pretty good job and you guys do a great job of looking at it and allocating it. I like keeping it that way, but.
Okay, y'all look at it, see who you want to cut and we'll be glad to do that.
Do, when, how does, how, how do we need, when do we need the decision? How do we need it?
It's out for comment now for thirty days.
Right.
And in thirty days, we've got to figure out how we're going to apply for the money because it has to be in.
We could take a look at it at the next committee meeting, make, and if we, if there's some suggestions for tweaking the numbers, we can make them then.
Okay.
Because that's still within your thirty day timeframe.
We can have some of them, as, as we said, they're here tonight if they, if you want to hear from them.
Well, I think we need to discuss it some further before we hear from them.
So are we hearing guidance that we want to cut it to ten, eleven, twelve? What do you want us to shoot for?
Well, I think, uh, I think thirteen and a half's pretty high, pretty healthy. I think.
Pretty healthy for me, may not be the same thing for you. Do you want ten, eleven, or twelve?
Ten to eleven sounds, uh, sounds like a ceiling to me.
How, how much are, are we gonna have left over, do, do we foresee?
Well, we don't know yet because.
Don't know.
The reason, and, and the reason we went up, we've been creeping up from ten is because we couldn't spend it on housing rehab, right?
Right, and that's the question we're asking.
Yeah.
Is whether or not we can do it or not now.
Well, the answer is, we don't know yet.
Just gotta wait until see where, where the costs are in rehabs and.
And how long it takes to get materials.
You know, if we choose to limit it to the ten range, we could always beef it up later. We saw that we're.
What can, how can we amend it through the year?
We can always do a substantial amendment to HUD. It just takes forty-five days to do it, right?
Yes.
Just more paperwork.
Well, that's what we did, that's what we did that one time when they, you came to us, I think, uh, Don was still running it and, and basically told us that we weren't gonna be able to spend it all.
We weren't gonna get there, so we came back with an amendment.
And you don't want to take a chance on getting your amount reduced, although it did reduce some this year.
Well, and what about this as a potential solution? And we can discuss this further, but let's say we keep it at thirteen point five. And if we foresee having a, a lot of money left over, we can expand from nineteen seventy-eight to say nineteen ninety. And that'll allow us to cover more, more houses eligible for, um, repair.
Right.
And say we.
There's, there's a lot, there's plenty of older houses still in the city of the seventy-nine, pre-seventy-nine.
Keep in mind, we only do owner occupied, so that eliminates some of them.
Occupied, yeah.
Yeah, so that eliminates some of them because a lot of those older homes are original units, so, you know, but I, I think increasing it to nineteen ninety helps us get another level in some neighborhoods that we need to go into and, and be able to help stabilize too.
What is the two hundred thousand public facilities? Could you remind me about that?
It's a future extension of alternative transportation for a potential housing project that we talked about.
Okay.
And we'll have more information on that within the next month or so because all of those pieces are coming together and that's what we're, what we're bringing that forward. I just can't give you all the details yet. We're not there yet.
Maybe you know more at the next committee meeting either.
Hmm, it's possible, yes, to have that by the next committee meeting. Before the end of the thirty days, we'll have it, but, but maybe not by.
So there's no action tonight?
No.
Well, I, I, I don't know. I'd like to make sure we're on the same page. I think you and I and Mike are. I don't know how everybody else is, but I think, I mean, Patsy, you're the one that taught me this years ago.
I know.
That we should keep it at ten and that's historically been my position.
I, I agree.
I like housing rehab.
I do too. And, and, and I will tell you, I fight for it all the time. But what I don't want to get into a position where we can't use all the money and we lose any of it.
Well, and that's where we come back to amend though.
Then that's when we amend it and then we go ahead and change it, but yeah. And, but when you do a housing rehab, that has a lot of long-term effects.
It does, no, we don't know.
It decreases these folks' utility bills, it enhances their, their quality of life, everything. Plus what it does for the overall, uh, uh, city.
Well, and it, it, we've had saved a lot of neighborhoods, I think, because we've been able to go in there. And I will fight for it all the way along and I'm glad you learned that lesson well because I, I will preach that again. I just don't want to take a chance on not being able to use the money effectively because of the conditions we're in now. If y'all want to set it at ten percent, we'll go to that and if we have to come back because we can't spend it, we'll do that.
That's what I prefer to do.
And we've learned to say yes ma'am to you for years, so yes.
And that works part of the time, but not always, I can say. So I, are we going to ten percent? Is that what everybody wants to do or not?
I would.
I like it.
Okay.
Well, you're not, you're not voting on it yet, but if you get a sense of what you need to do, then at least you can come back with the right numbers.
Then we can kick it around. We'll look at it next meeting, see what, what it looks like.
Okay, we can do that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Anything else for CDBG?
I don't think so, Kim.
I'll open up Health and Sanitation Committee. And we have an update on sixteen oh three Westwood presented by Ernest Kate.
Speaking of housing rehab, oh.
Yeah, we asked about, we asked about that.
Sorry.
He did not qualify for the CDBG money from what I understood.
Well, the update is that the bank has formally filed foreclosure, uh, foreclosure action. I put a copy of the list, pendants in the packet, uh, so they're gonna take it up or and have it. Wanted to give you all the update because I know we've been, we've been dealing with this for months and months and months and.
I haven't driven by there. How far along were they?
I'm sorry?
I haven't driven by there. How far along? Was it any further?
No, hadn't changed in months.
Not really.
Is that right?
There's still not the roof on it that was gonna promised August thirty-first.
Oh, Ernest, with the foreclosure going on, is there any reason for us to take action so that the bank or the potential buyer or something like that knows that the city's out there requiring this to be finished?
The bank's very well aware.
The bank is, I know, but they may not tell the buyer.
For purposes of tonight, the list pendants, as you know, prevents us from moving forward with our raise and removal. And that's on the update I wanted to make you all aware, that the bank is, I would much rather the bank step in and fix this than us spend taxpayer money on this, clean the property, which they knew we were prepared to do. So, I mean, we went so far as billing inspector went so far as to got, to get three quotes to perform the raise and removal. And that, uh, once that was done, I think they realized that, step in and take control, and I'm glad they did.
On another update, there's progress being made on Maple Street on that house there. They're moving along. They're doing a lot of work on it and you can see it.
You know, we were, we thought it was, they were just gonna do the, the old original part and didn't know when they would start on the rest.
Yeah, but now they're working on it too.
Yeah, it's, it's coming along well.
Are there questions or concerns about? And I'm gonna close, formally close.
All right, I'll open up Parks and Rec. We've got an update from Chad. I'll turn it to Chad. You hadn't seen Celebrate Magazine this month? Chad is in it. I opened it up and I laughed out loud. I thought Celebrate Magazine hit an all-time low with.
I'm trying to sell subscriptions for it. I think we gave you a summary, it's in your packet, of what we've been doing the last couple of years. Two or three years actually, and kind of gives you a whole summary of, of our recreation, sports, and our park overview. So if y'all got any questions, uh, we did open Shaw Park Saturday and it was packed. Every parking spot was full on Saturday. And I, I went last night and, you know, there were several that wasn't packed, but, but it was getting a lot of use.
When's the grand opening?
Grand opening.
May first.
May first.
May Day for all you commies.
One question I had for you. On the, on the satisfaction survey, do they, do they write, you know, what their issues are typically or they, I mean?
I, I don't know. Um, you know, in the past, I, when I got this job about a year and a half ago, yeah, I noticed a lot of the excellence weren't there.
Right.
And, uh, and as we've gone on the last couple of years, it looks like they're increasing to a positive level. I think my guys do a pretty good job running the leagues now. Uh, we, we've hired a new baseball guy and he's doing a outstanding job and, well, all, all four of them are, um, so.
I was just wondering if they backed these up with comments like this is what, you know, kind of.
They probably do. I, I don't look at them. Matt does, our Recreation Superintendent, so I could ask him and let you know. I do want to say, uh, this weekend, we have a baseball tournament at Tyson and CL, Charlie, Willie, George. And we have two hundred and thirty-one teams. Now, we, we can't house them all because we don't have enough fields, but, um, I think they'll play in Fayetteville and Bentonville. But we have teams coming from all the big cities, Omaha, Topeka, KC, St. Louis, Oklahoma City, East Texas, and a couple teams from Michigan.
Wow.
So you, this is, will be our biggest tournament this year and it'll run Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So putting people in the hotels and making money on the concession.
Have we got our new lights at the ballpark? The new lights at the Tyson?
Tyson, yeah, it's, we have, we've been playing, so. Tennis lights at Shaw, they're on a timer, so they can go push a button and, and play till. They, they turn on thirty minutes before sunset and then they'll go off at like ten fifteen. So you, but you push a button and it'll stay on for an hour and a half and then it'll be a, a buzzing sound if you want to play longer. Then you go push it again and then it'll eventually go off, you know, at ten fifteen.
But these are the low radiation lights?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you didn't go bother, you can go, uh, on forty-nine like you're going to Fayetteville and look over at Tyson. Well, in the years past, you, all that light would bleed over into the neighborhood. Now you, you just see the light go down. So it's, it's pretty amazing.
Chad, when we spoke, I guess I had a constituent that had an issue with the ball, softball fields. Um, and for any other one in the public that has this issue, um, your response, I thought was very good. Um, that there was a rain out, there were several fields being used, some by a tournament, some by our city leagues. Fields were the ones that were rained out. When parents came up there, they saw these other fields being used for a tournament and they felt pretty, you know, hurt, but, but it's, it's based on what?
Well, it's based on the, the three fields that they didn't get to play on are old softball fields and we just put sod on there. So when it rains two inches in whatever hour or two, that water doesn't have anywhere to go yet. It just kind of sits there. And, um, when my guys get there in the morning or late at night, you know, they're gonna have to choose who plays because they don't have, we don't have enough people to maintain all ten fields.
All of them.
On a given Sunday, one day.
Right.
Uh, in that instance, the director said, if we can't start by ten AM, I can't play because he had so many games.
Hurt.
So we told him we couldn't start, so he canceled those guys.
Okay.
Anything else? On another note, real quick, the. On another note, real quick, the Chad's facility, the rec center would qualify for the CBD, CDB.
CBDG.
Awesome.
Being it's low income, so I think, for some of the new guys, I think we need to keep that in mind too, because there's plenty still that we need to do at the rec center that could carry the money over.
Yeah, we need to get a elevator, um, and then, uh, the entryway is gonna get redone, have an elevator, and we gotta, we got a quarter of a room upstairs that we have to finish, and then the, the old baseball area, I don't know if you've been in there or not, but we're wanting to put rubber surface on the floor with a sport court that has, uh, volleyball, basketball, and pickleball, have that there, that way our members can play while we're having tournaments on the basketball courts, so it gives them access to, at least get to do something, but in order to do that, we're gonna have money to get it going.
Anything else?
Much, Benny.
Well, just that baseball part, we probably get by with a hundred thousand, the other stuff's probably gonna get in a little higher, uh, elevator, elevator was quoted about a hundred and fifty, back when we had it designed, so, probably another two fifty, three hundred there, so maybe half a mil could get us pretty close.
I'm, I met with Chad, we met last week, and asked him to start firming up some prices on some of that stuff, so we would, I mean, got money besides CDBG too.
Right, and, and, and some of that, we can do ourselves, since we can build small things, so like upstairs, we can just, if we just had the money to purchase the materials, then we can do it, you can't do it in the summer, cause we're strapped, but come this fall, we can start going.
Right.
Anything else? Thank you, Chad.
Yep.
Thank you.
End of journey.